Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on September 7, 2021, 10:00 AM in the Commissioners Court Room in the County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is indication pledge of allegiance to the US and Texas flag to Mr. Colerole Lito.
You bow with me? Father God, this morning we bow, thanking you for all of your blessings. We thank you, Lord, for those that protect us, that put their lives on the line for us. We thank you, Lord, for every member of the Brazos County family. Dear God, please enlighten our minds with truth, wisdom, inflame our hearts with love, inspire our will with courage, enrich our life with service. And, dear Lord, pardon what we have been. We ask that you sanctify what we are and order what we shall be. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the D. Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns. And I believe we've got Robert Rose here that wanted to speak.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. My request is very simple this morning, and it's regarding the upcoming need for booster shots, COVID booster shots. And one of my concerns is that if we decide to rely on the local pharmacies for these booster shots, that we won't be able to get enough shots and enough arms fast enough. And so I'd like to raise the possibility that we need to restart the vaccine hub that we had at the Brazos Center. They got over 100,000 shots into arms in a very short amount of time. And I know other places are restarting their vaccine hubs as well. And so with the upcoming date for booster shots coming up pretty soon, I'd like to present the idea that we might need to restart the vaccine hub. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other citizen input and our concerns? Hearing none, we will consider and take action on Agenda Items 3 through 33. Number three is correction to the term of appointment for Dennis Christensen for the Brazos County Regional Mobility Authority Board. Term of appointment is January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2025.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number four is Order 21-008, adopting the tax rate of 6% for the local provider participation fund for fiscal year 2022, and is designating BVAA Compass Bank as the LPPF depository.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number five is request from risk management for payment authorization to Texas Association of Counties in the amount of $163,256.74 for an overpayment made to the county claim number PR 2020-8226-1.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number six is request from Justice P. 3 for payment authorization to Walton's Office Works in the amount of $1,444.84 for office supplies purchased or was not obtained in advance.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Judge, yeah, I think that should be Wilton's Office Works as opposed to...
Ah, you're right. You're exactly right. So that's the Wilton's Office Works.
Okay. Do I think I can second that?
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number seven is approval of Brazos County Clerk's Records Management and archival plan to collect $5 fee for court filing and a $10 fee for non-court filings.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number eight is approval of Brazos County District Clerk's Records Management and archival plan to collect $10 fee for court filings.
Move approval?
Second that.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number nine is designation of the day, time, and location for Commissioners Court to convene with regular session each week for FY 2022, and that be Tuesday 10 o'clock here in the courtroom.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 10 is approval of the proposed county holidays for FY 2022 calendar year.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 11 is authorization with the county justice to sign an updated MOU with emergency alerting to the public.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 12 is approval of the MOU for an easement purchase between City of Bryan, Texas Utilities City and Brazos County.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 13 is award of RFP 21-138 grant application administrative services recommended award is trailer and associates.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 14 is approval of service contract CIP 21-607, parking lot light replacement for Brazos County Facilities Detention Center with Henshaw Electric, Inc., in the amount of $37,706.95.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 15 is approval of agreement 22-025, long-term residential services for juvenile offenders based available with Pegasus Schools, Inc.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 16 is approval of attached order exempting contract 22-614 with Allison Bass McGee for legal services for competitive bidding per the Local Government Code, Section 262.024A4.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 17 is approval of contract renewal with Grimes County for juvenile detention pre-adjudication services.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 18 is requesting approval for the following contracts at Savins.
Move approval A and B?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve A and B, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 19 is consider and take action to close, vacate, and abandon 284 feet of prescriptive right-of-way at the end of Fable Road. Property consists of .194 of 1 acre being abandoned to a neighboring property owner who owns both sides of this section of Fable Road, sites located precinct 1.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 20 is acceptance of special warranty deed from Brenda and Salvador Storres Soretti for .783 acre of land to be used for improvements on Carter Lane in precinct 2.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 21 is consider and take action on Hawkwood Energy Utility Permit to install a temporary 12-inch polyurethane water line within and along the right-of-way of Wheelock Hall Road, a distance of 5,265 feet line will provide water to an oil well sites located precinct 2.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 22 is approval of final plaid of Garrett Lane subdivision, Lot 1, Lot 2, 7.78 acres, James Pruitt Survey, number 76A-193 Brazos County, Texas, sites located precinct 2.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 23 is tax refund application for the following...
I move approval of overpayments A, B, and C?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve A, B, and C, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 24 is budget amendments, budget amendments FY 20/21, 47.1 through 47.9.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 25 is adoption of the Brazos County Budget for fiscal year ending September 30, 2022, and we need to go through the amendments first from the proposal.
Judge, before we go through all the amendments, I'd like to move that we approve 1 through 24 without reading each individual one, if that's okay with the report. So I move that we approve 1 through 24.
I'll second that. Okay, motion made and seconded to approve 1 through 24. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. So 1 through 24, thank you, Commissioner. Okay, so let's go to 25 then. Budget is to move general fund reserve, fund balance, and Commissioners Court. It's a $20,000 request from Commissioner Ford to increase the use of general fund reserve by 20,000 to increase the salary services in the same amount for salary study to be performed for the sheriff's office. And I mean, I will go ahead and speak up first.
Do we need to have a motion in a second before we discuss?
We can do that.
I'll move.
I'll second for discussion purposes.
Okay, so we got a motion in a second. So this particular one is to request a salary survey or put money for a salary survey. While we were going through it, you know, most of us were aware that we increased everybody's budget by, you know, 3% COLA and then a 1% merit. And it was a pretty significant increase to the whole budget, and of course Sheriff's Office's biggest budget of the county, so it was a big there. The, and there was a second request that came in to increase some of the management positions to a higher level. We did a preliminary study in-house, didn't cost us $20,000, but we did a preliminary study in-house and looked at a couple of counties who are very close to us, Smith and Hayes, and their population is maybe just slightly bigger than this. The roads that are the square miles are both bigger than Brazos County, and we compare very favorably with both of those two counties. We looked at the two cities when really, I mean, you're comparing apples and oranges when you're comparing cities. There's a difference in pretty much everything that goes on within the city and outside the city limits. You know, but the thing that I look at when we're looking at whether we actually need to increase above and beyond what we've been doing is really the turnover rate. And we looked at that, and it does not appear that the turnover rate in the higher management positions is significant. I mean, certainly we had jail administrator retire. Now he's sheriff. We had the chief deputy retire and moved to New Mexico and got a new chief deputy. So we had those, but really in the administrative side, I just did not see that we had a high turnover rate that would, in my opinion, necessitate us spending the $20,000 for a salary study. I mean, I believe we looked at that in-house. I mean, there are things to me that I, you know, I look at too. I don't, now, I understand that from the jail side, if you've got detention officers who may be wanting to get on the streets, there's probably some that may leave and go to a city or PD or somewhere or within the sheriff's office if positions are available. But if there's no positions on the street available, those people may end up going to a PD, and I understand that. If they want to be on the street, they want to be on the street one way or the other. But, and that's where we saw the biggest turnover was in the jail, not really in the administration side of it, other than retirement. There were a number of retirements on the administrative side. I mean, then I look at, I mean, if I look at the constable offices, there are a number, if you look at the deputies that are within the constable offices, a number of them came from PDs. I mean, so it would look to me like it might be the other way, that they, there's PD officers who would like to be with the county, you know. So I'm just kind of trying to take a broad look at it. I'm opposed to spending the $20,000 for a salary study when I really don't see that it's a need, but...
Judge, I certainly respect your position. What I'm going to tell you is being the newest member of the court, I don't feel at this time that I've got enough information that I can tell the sheriff's department no. And that $20,000, I think it represents 1/100 of our total budget, and it would give me ammunition where if the answer is no in the future, then I'd feel very comfortable not having just an in-house study, but to have an external study to look at and give me the information that I need to make a decision on it, is the reason for the motion.
Well, and I respect that. I just try to take a look at what, at what the appearance is before we spend money, and so if there's anybody else that wants to...
Well, you know, Judge, you and I don't agree on many things. And with respect to Commissioner Ford and my colleagues, as one of the senior members, I'm going to agree with you this time, Judge. I don't think we need to spend $20,000. We have had these studies before, Commissioner Ford. And just for my sake, my comfort, I visit with other departments too. And I'm very proud of what we have and what we're doing and what we have done. We don't have a great turnover. That's a very good sign. I am not opposed to raising salaries, but at this time, I don't think a study is necessary, and $20,000 being budgeted for that could be spent for better uses. Like, I'd like to see, as the young man mentioned, we've got the vaccination hubs and that facing us. We haven't decided, but we have a lot to spend the money on.
I think the sheriff wants to talk.
Come on up, Sheriff.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I'd like to speak in favor of approving the amendment. My experience in talking with other chiefs and sheriffs across the state and across the country is that there's a shortage of police officers, peace officers. That shortage of peace officers is creating a competitive market, and we're not competitive. We're not losing people to Smith County and Hayes County. We're losing people to the state, and we're losing people to Bryan and College Station. So I believe a survey would be helpful in making us competitive and help us make good decisions. Thank you.
George, big question?
Yeah, Judge, I just wanted to say, I think we've done a good job in evaluating the requests that were made by the SO. I think that at this time, we've got information that indicates to us that the cost of living adjustment and the merit, which nothing happened last year, so we may be a little bit behind what has been usual and customary, but I think that that's the same experience that we've had with both of the cities as well as, I'm not sure about the DPS or not, but what I would like to see is if we're going to do a salary survey, I'd like for us to go ahead and look at everybody. And I'd like to include, particularly if we're going to do one, but just limit it to the competitive area or arena of law enforcement, then I'd like to see us put our constables and those who do comparable types of duties and include them also in that. But is there anything that would preclude us from being able to do a budget amendment with contingency funds and do a salary survey for everybody in the county or to expand the definition of the salary survey to where we look at all law enforcement personnel, all law sworn, I guess it would be, is what we're looking for, personnel within Brazos County for a competitive analysis?
I don't think there would be anything that would keep us from doing that. I mean, again, I mean, I think you need to look at turnover and just kind of see whether it looks like there's really a need. I mean, if you don't identify it, to me, I don't, I wouldn't want to spend the money unless we identified really a problem. And I've just not seen a problem, whether it's in the constable's offices or sheriff's office at this time. And, you know, it could be county-wide. I know that there's a problem, there's a labor shortage, if you will, and it's not just with law enforcement.
Right.
It's everywhere.
Right.
Everybody's talking about it, you know, whether it's restaurants or anywhere else. I mean, they just can't find people who want to work. So, and I don't know what we do about all that. I mean, you know, it's a problem. So I think it's something we'd take a look at maybe in the future and...
Well, if we were... Judge, I'm willing to amend my motion to include all law enforcement for Brazos County, excuse me, to include the constable's office and the sheriff's department, if you'd allow me to amend the motion.
Well, I mean, I would, I personally, as one member of the court, would still be opposed to it, but so...
And as one of the senior members of this court, I'd like to say that I see more pressing needs in the county other than increasing or spending funds to study the salaries. And we already have had, and we get constant input and feedback on our sheriff, constables, and those members that are, I would include the EMS officers. I just think we need to spend, if we're going to spend a $20,000, I'd like to see it spent on the pandemic expenses because they have been great and they continue to increase. And that will serve all of Brazos County. I have nothing against the sheriff or constables, but if we're going to serve the county, let's do what's right by everybody.
Judge, since I'm the only one that hasn't spoken on this, let me just say, first of all, how proud I am of our sheriff's office.
Yes.
And the men and women who serve there. They do a great job. They have a great reputation in the county, and I'm very appreciative of that.
Yes.
Having said that, I think our salaries are competitive. Appreciate the work that Irene and her office did on the salary survey. I thought it was very thorough. And I'm opposed to this amendment and the spending of the $20,000. I think the money could be spent better elsewhere.
Do you still, I mean, since you...
Judge, I realize I'm on the losing end of this already, but let's call the question. I'd like to go ahead and vote on it, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Judge?
Have to vote on the amendment first.
There was an attempt to amend the motion, and that wasn't seconded.
It was seconded?
I didn't hear a second.
No, it was not seconded.
So you just have to vote on the motion.
Okay, so we didn't have a second on the amendment to the amendment?
Right. You're back to the original motion to amend.
Okay, so we're at the original amendment, motion is for or against number 25.
That's correct.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand. Okay, motion fails. So now we need to adopt the whole budget with 1 through 24 amendments included in the proposed budget.
Move approval of the whole budget, including amendments 1 through 24.
And I second that.
Okay, so motion is made and seconded to approve the full budget, including 1 through 24 amendments.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. And then we'll move to number 26, is a resolution 21-014, levying a tax rate for Brazos County for the tax year 2021.
I'd like to offer a motion.
Okay.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .4935, which is effectively a 2.04% increase in the tax rate this year.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the .4935 as the tax rate.
That's correct.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries.
Okay, I'd also like to make a motion that the maintenance and operation portion of the 2021 county tax rate be .442257 cents per $100 of value.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the maintenance and operation portion to be .442257.
That's correct.
Per $100 value. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 3 is...
I'd like to offer a third motion. I move that the debt portion of the 2021 county tax rate be .051243 cents per $100 of value.
Second.
Motion was made to approve the debt portion to .051243 per $100 value.
That's correct.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. So that completes number 26.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty...
Do you want to read the resolution, Judge?
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, what's on it?
I do.
Okay. Well, here's the...
Whereas Commissioners Court is responsible for the levy of the adoption of a tax rate for Brazos County, now therefore be it resolved that the Brazos County Commissioners Court of Brazos County, Texas, does hereby levy and adopt a tax rate on the $100 valuation of Brazos County, of County Brazos, tax year 2021 as follows. .442257 for the purpose of maintenance and operations, .051243 for the payment of principal and interest for the county debt, and a total tax rate of .4935 as the total tax rate. This tax rate will increase, will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's rate. The tax rate will be effectively, will effectively be raised by .92% and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a $100,000 home by approximately $1.56. Be it further resolved that the tax assessor-collector is hereby authorized to assess and collect the taxes of Brazos County in accordance with the above-set tax rate adopted this 7th day of September, 2021. rate adopted this seventh day of September twenty twenty-one. And that, that's the resolution, that was, that finishes up number twenty-six, okay.
Okay.
Twenty-seven is ratification of property tax increase due to the adoption of the budget that will require more revenue from property taxes than in the previous year.
Move of approval.
Second that.
Motion made, seconded. I will read the, the tax increase, ratification of the property tax increase due to the adoption of a budget that will require more revenue from property taxes than in a previous year. This budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget of, by three million, six hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars, or three point nine seven percent, and of that amount, two million, two hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-three cents is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax rolls. And we've got a motion in a second, I believe.
Yeah.
Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries. Number twenty-eight is request approval from the Brazos County Salary Schedule for Fiscal Year twenty twenty-two.
Move of approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries, number twenty-eight is request approval from Brazos County, what's that, that's twenty-eight. Twenty-nine is request review and approve the FY twenty-two, twenty twenty-two merit policy guidelines.
Move of approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries, number thirty is personnel change status.
Move of approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries, number thirty-one is payment of claims, claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number eight one zero nine seven six five through claim number eight one zero nine nine zero eight, and claims number nine zero zero two eight six zero through claim number nine zero zero two nine four one.
Move of approval.
Second. Motion made, seconded to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries. We'll skip down to number thirty-four, Juvenile Director's Report on Detention Population.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
We have thirty juveniles in detention, twenty-four males, six females. We have fifteen currently in isolation due to protocols, and we have twenty-two on electronic monitor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number thirty-five, Sheriff's Report on Inmate Population, Sheriff.
Good morning. Five hundred and seventy-eight today, five hundred men, seventy-eight women. We have thirty-seven on electronic monitoring and two pending. We have seven inmates isolated this morning. We have six employees isolated and nine quarantined.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Number thirty-six is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
I will repeat my request of last week that we have the Health Department and those involved, is that time, do I see, in, in the COVID nineteen and Delta, and like the speaker asked earlier, we need to start discussing the efforts we're going to take or make. The numbers are going up in the pandemic. When we count the deaths, they are going up. Those, as you noticed today, even in our jail, the numbers are going up. So I think we need to have a discussion of that, and I'd like to offer that as one of the possible subjects that we tackle after, since we've got the budget taken care of, we can move on.
Okay. Any other announcement? Thirty-seven is call for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none, we will go back up to thirty-two and convene an executive session pursuant to the following, Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven one, to consult an attorney about pending or contemplated litigation and our settlement offer. And then B is Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven two five, to deliberate business and financial issues related to a contract being negotiated and.
And Judge, if we could do B first, it involves significantly more people.
Okay.
And would potentially affect A anyhow, so if we could do B first. And as the court is aware, you need a letter from Legal to, to do this, and I've prepared a letter and submitted, I do notice I need to make one correction on it in the first paragraph, and I'll do that afterwards. But you are allowed to do this if the court votes unanimously that deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the court in negotiations with a third person, and the attorney advising the Commissioners Court issues a written determination that deliberation in open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the Commissioners Court in negotiations with a third person, and notwithstanding that, the Commissioners Court must make a tape recording of the proceeding of a closed meeting and, and to deliberate the information.
What, what's the correction that needs to be made on the letter?
In my retention letter, I, I left Hart in there, and it should be Lesman. Lesman, the roofing contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, since we've got an opinion from Legal, I move that we move into executive session to discuss the negotiations.
Motion made, seconded. It needs to be a unanimous vote, I believe, so we'll all.
Yes, sir.
Raise your right hands if we approve. It's unanimous. Do you want to list two all besides Commissioners Court?
Yes, sir.
Sure.
We, we have Bill and Fred from the County Engineers Office, we have Scott Franklin from Forte Consulting, and then Charles and Caitlin from Purchasing Office, along with Legal.
Okay. And the time is ten thirty-seven.
Oh, and Cheryl, Judge.
And Cheryl.
We are coming out of executive session, it is eleven thirty-one, and there's not any action to be taken. The next item is to adjourn. Thank you all.